Start with a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We wanted to start this evening with some staff recognitions. And the first staff recognition we have is we'd like to recognize a group of people who've been working really hard with our Unified Sports Program and Special Olympics. So here this evening, we have Mike Santos, a physical education teacher at the middle high school, Pam Reed, a paraprofessional in the post program, and Roger, oh, and Mary Willett, a teacher of the post program. Also been involved in the program has been Roger King. And also Mr. Schultz has done, taken a huge leadership role as the athletic director in bringing Unified Sports to Carver. So Mary, I don't know who's gonna come up, if you're all gonna come up in terms of making a little presentation about Unified Sports, but I think it's, I'd really like to thank them for the work that they've been doing to give all of our athletes opportunities within the Carver School community. And ultimately, they're gonna talk a little bit about Unified Sports, but that's what Unified Sports does. It gives every athlete within the Carver community the opportunity to participate and to gain what, to gain those positives that you gain through participation in athletics. And it's because of the leadership of our staff in that area that we've really thrived and taken a leadership role in the South Shore. So I would say that the Carver Public Schools is a leader in terms of Unified Sports in the South Shore. It's thanks to these people that we are. So I'd like to express my appreciation to Pam, to Mike, to Mary, to Roger King, who's not here, and to Mr. Schultz. And with that, please welcome Pam, Mike, and Mary.
Thank you very much. I wanted to put together a really nice slideshow for you. I didn't. I put a few slides together is all I got managed, because I'm still learning Drive versus PowerPoint. But even a few pictures, I think, will really show the enthusiasm of all the students involved. I could've really included a lot of the parents and other staff members. It really has been amazing. And even though this was just for Unified, I did include a little bit of regular Special Olympics as well, because as Scott said, we truly are one of the leaders in Massachusetts even. We're one of the few schools that still has a program for Unified as well as traditional Special Olympics. Most schools either do one or the other. We've chosen to do both for a variety of reasons, mostly so that it will include more students and more community members, students who have graduated, so that they still know that they're welcome in our community. So, and although I think most people think our Unified Team actually started a few years ago, we actually started five years ago. This is a picture of the Unified Team that actually went to the States for track and field about five years ago. And you'll recognize some of the students who are older, who have since graduated.
And Mary, I didn't do a great job in terms of defining Unified Sports, just for the community, if you could just give a brief explanation, definition of what Unified Sports entails?
Certainly. Special Olympics recognized many years ago that we should have an opportunity for students with, with students who have ADD or intellectual disabilities, being able to work with their peers, whether they have disabilities or not. So, as we all know, sports is such a, an opportunity to bring people together. And it's an opportunity to have success and to have, to work on so many skills that are far beyond the athletic component of it. Although that certainly is an important part of it, that does not represent all of what Special Olympics is. So several years ago, oh, many, I didn't even, I wish I knew. I don't know when Unified started, but it did start. And I know that Mike Schultz, as Mr. Neef said, he was actually involved in Unified Sports when he was in college, when he was in Connecticut. So he has been a strong proponent of Unified, because he saw the benefits of it in his college experience. So it's really just bringing people together. It's bringing people with disabilities together with their traditional peers. So, and we feel very fortunate that the Carver community has embraced it and has helped it grow. We're also excited to say, even though we initially started with a high school level, we are growing it to the elementary school level as well. We had some meetings last year, and we have started, and you'll see in a few pictures, some of our athletes that are as young as, I think, third grade. So, these are just a few pictures. There's some of the sports that we do have been track and field. So we have a student up in the top doing shot put. And this picture in the bottom again shows some of our traditional Special Olympics athletes. And for anybody who knows these students, that's Paige Lawson. So as you know, she just turned 22, so this is a picture from long ago. These are some of our newer athletes who participated for the first time in Barnstable last, last spring. And they were doing the assisted walk, and I believe Veronica Godhers for the softball throw. Again, these are just some of our younger athletes. Again, Paige Lawson, last year. She was doing the javelin throw. As you can see, she puts everything into it. Another great thing about it is it's not just the people in the Unified Special Olympics who participate. It's nice to see Jenna here today, because our school council has also been very involved in it. We do Unified Bocce in conjunction with our school student council group. So these are some students who are making signs for it, for our Bocce tournament. I really feel bad. One of our biggest sports this season is soccer, and I only have a few pictures, because I couldn't get it from my phone to the thing very easily. So these are just, literally just a couple of pictures. We participated in a jamboree at Abing, in Abington, where there were three towns who came together. Abington did an unbelievable job hosting this jamboree. The kids had such a great time. We hosted our first game last week against Hanover, and we are having, we're wrapping up our soccer season this Thursday with Marshfield. We're going to Marshfield. So it's, it's a lot of fun for the kids. This has nothing to do with the Unified, but I had to throw this in here anyway, because, because the great thing, again, is in addition to Special Olympics, we also have a thriving best buddies program. It's nice to see Tammy Johnson here, who was one of the starters of the program, and Jenna, again, who's a treasurer, treasurer?
Secretary.
Secretary of our program. So recently, we had two students chosen. We nominated them, and they got to go to an event at Gillette Stadium, where they got to throw the ball with Tom Brady, which was absolutely positively amazing, so. But it's because we're active. We're a small school, as we all know, but we keep, we just, we just get involved in anything anyone will say. Do you want to? We're like, yes. You know, I mean, we're not afraid, because of our size, not to get involved. And, and I just love that. And I think the fact that, you know, I mean, Pam has been involved in the Special Olympics for so many years, and Roger King as well, I mean, it's hard to, to get your energy going sometimes. You're like, oh, my gosh, this is gonna be the last year. I promise, I'll say to my family, this'll be the last year. And then you go to the events, and you get re-motivated every year. And the families are so appreciative, and the community's so appreciative. And we just get re-energized every year. And then, we've been struggling for a few years, because Pam and I are not really good coaches. I'm going to have Mike Santos. It's just so exciting. And they're not students just in my program. I know that, you know, I have the students who are more, more involved. So I just feel, and having Mike join us, just, we're just so grateful. And we're just so gratefully for your support. And I talked longer than I wanted to, but don't you just love Tom Brady?
And then we just wanted to give you a CD, too. Abington made a CD about jamboree of all our kids playing. So that's just a CD that had the game. We played a 20-minute game against Rockland, and then we played a 20-minute game against Abington with all our Unified, not just in the soccer match. So it was a good experience for us. We just wanted to give you that, just if you have any free time to watch.
Well, we'll share, we'll share with everybody. That's great.
So currently, we do Bocce, soccer, track and field.
And I know that Mr. Schultz has been working with the South Shore League in terms of actually maybe establishing a league, a league team, where every, every team in the league would actually have a Unified Sports team and actually have league competitions, very similar to traditional athletics.
And students will participate in it, in the MIA ones. It's considered a varsity sport. So, I mean, we have, we have to follow the rules and the regulations. We have to, you know, follow the protocol of, you know, the trainings. And there's just a lot of different components to it, so.
So again, my intention this evening was just to thank Mary, and Mike, and Pam, and Roger for all of their work with our students in this program. I think they've been outstanding representatives of this Carver Public Schools. So thank you to them. So I had a couple of the recognitions this evening, and I'm, these people are unwilling to be recognized. But, so they, they respectfully declined. But I've told them that I'm going to recognize them anyhow. So they, they know that, so they respected, they respectfully declined to come to the meeting to be officially recognized, but I said I would still take some time to talk about what they've done. I do think that Mr. Schultz has done an outstanding job. He took those two roles on and really did a nice job for the first term in terms of covering those roles while Ms. Holly was on her maternity leave. You know, there's a lot of, there was a lot of benefits to that. One, just having someone who the staff was new, was comfortable with, in terms of filling that role. Also, the reality piece in terms of, it was a benefit for the district in terms of not having to hire an interim athletic director. So there was a benefit for that piece of it. And so Mr. Schultz did a great job doing that role while Ms. Holly was on her maternity leave. And he could not have done it without the support of the Athletic Secretary, Phyllis Bowie, and the Administrative Assistant to the Principal, Gina Marie Rush. So I invited all three of them here this evening to say, really, there were three people doing four people's jobs, and they, they shared that load, and they just, they did a tremendous job. And they kept the school moving forward in that situation. I mean, Mike will honestly admit that during that time, he was probably 90 percent, this is the number he uses, he was 90 percent principal and 10 percent athletic director. So a lot of responsibilities fell on Phyllis Bowie in terms of filling some of those roles as the athletic director, and she did a tremendous job. So all three of them should just be commended. They stepped up to the plate, they, and they were outstanding. As I said, they're not here this evening, but I wanted to publicly recognize them. So we can applaud for them. The other two people I wanted to recognize also respectfully declined and said, and the interesting part is, I think, all five of them gave me the same message. All five people said, we just do our job. And that's a powerful message, because in reality, they were doing more than their jobs. But they just said, my, 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 their thought process was, we just do our job. And I, I think it is important that we recognize people that go above and beyond. We're trying to take the beginnings of school committee meetings and recognizing students, staff, in each meeting to do some sort of recognitions. And the reality is Stephen Mahoney and Candy Barry, as our technology specialists in the district, we brought in 450 Chromebooks, and over the summer, they had to catalog them all, get them all prepared for students, and get them out to students. That's a tremendous workload, and that was just more work. And they did an outstanding job in terms of the Chromebook deployment. I did ask Meredith to say maybe a few words beyond that, but we'd just like to recognize Stephen and Candy for their outstanding job in terms of getting these devices out to our students. Meredith?
Thank you. So I just want to echo what Scott mentioned. I think it's very easy when we're looking at the deployment of something to look at what happens when we will them into the auditorium and pass them out to students. But the reality is the lion's share of work does fall on our tech specialists, and it starts from the purchasing process, where we're looking for the most prudent option in our price point, all the way to bringing them here and making sure that we comply with all of the child internet protection aspects of pieces, that we have filtering on there, that everything works in a manner that serial numbers are inventoried, so we know how to track which student has which Chromebook. And as Scott mentioned, if we had not purchased these, they would've already had too much to do over the summer. So the fact that they were willing to give up even more of their time to make sure that the initiative was a success is truly remarkable.
Thank you. And Mike, and Pam, and Roger, and Mary go, I didn't know I could respectfully decline. I'm always joking. No, no, I'm not saying you shouldn't, absolutely, absolutely not. We don't want you to take the position that you can respectfully decline.
Yeah, with that, we can move forward open for comments from the general public. And I'd, I'd actually like to thank you for showing up and being here. It's nice to put a face to the effort, so thank you. Seeing none, comments from the APC.
How's everyone doing tonight? So as we all know, we had the November election. We, you guys showed us our support, the board, the town on the vote no, one, two initiative. We had overwhelming support, I said, like, between the board, the community, my members. I know Tammy did, did a lot for us. We, we won, the ballot question got voted down, 62 percent around the state, so we, we had very strong support everywhere. So that, you know, that was just great work by everybody around. We recently had a workload committee. I think we had some great dialogue and had good conversations on where we're going, moving forward. And again, we're just working, and school year's moving along, so that's about it.
Thank you. An update by captains' council?
And student council.
I'm still looking at the first page. Jenna, you have an update for us.
There is not someone here for captains. Well, Jenna, if you want to go over to the mic, that would be great.
Hello. Hello. Okay, so on Halloween, we did a costumes for children make-a-wish, and we raised $480. And usually, the kids donate about $1 when they wear a costume. And we, we donated that $480. Next, we, last Tuesday, on Election Day, we went to CMASK, which is Southeastern Massachusetts Associations of Student Councils. And usually, we just go there to work on our leadership and do like energizers, which we get like pumped up and stuff, and we like meet new people. And usually, Carver hosts about three workshops, where we teach kids for like about 45 minutes. But this time, my friend Tori and I were the only people who did a workshop, and we worked about, we worked on communication and how not everyone can see things the way you do, but you can still get to the same goals. We are currently creating a website for student council. Kaylee Wentworth, she's going to be appointed our webmaster, because on CMASK, they have a webmaster, but, and every other council does besides ours. So we're gonna make that a position next year. Next, we're gonna do a pep rally, and that's going to be November 22nd. And it's a patriotic theme, because new president and all. And then we might have a student council lock-in. That's not official yet, but it's led by Jenna Wells and Maggie McCarthy. And it might just, it might be patriotic themed, we don't know yet. That's up to the students, so that's really it. Any questions?
Thank you very much. So moving on, we're moving to the approval of the minutes. I take a motion.
How many motion to approve?
There's two sets there. So we have the joint minutes with the board to select on the September 29th.
How many motion to approve, 29, uh, minutes for the 29th?
I have to abstain, because I wasn't there, so.
Okay. So, gentlemen, any questions? Because I'll settle that. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention?
Yep.
And then I'll accept another for the regular session minutes, October 17th.
I would like to make a motion to approve the regular session minutes from the October 17th meeting.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, anything?
Obstain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous with Andrew abstaining. So now we move on to communications.
Okay, communications. So unfortunately, one of the people we just recognized has resigned his position, Stephen Mahoney. So Stephen Mahoney, our technology specialist, has just received an outstanding job officer from, from the private sector. That's really an offer that he could not refuse. He said he spent a lot of time thinking about whether or not he was gonna do it. He's really enjoyed his time here in Carver. But I told him, based on the nature of the position, I said, you can't refuse this position. You need to take this. So Stephen has resigned his position. His last day will be the, last school day is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving break. We also had the resignation of a custodian, Leo Chase, and of a math one, Title I Math paraprofessional, Heather Mento. We do had two hires during this time. One was a school bus driver, Stephanie Gillen. And we have replaced Stephen with Brian Mahoney. So we've hired, and we have filled that role, and Brian actually started today. So he's gonna have a little bit of a transition time with Stephen. That's important, just because of the nature of that technology position, to have a little crossover for the two people to share some information, do some training with each other. So we have hired Brian Mahoney as our new technology specialist.
Is that completely?
That is, they are brothers. So Brian Mahoney and Stephen Mahoney are brothers. Brian Mahoney was the most qualified candidate. Stephen Mahoney was not involved in the hiring process of Brian Mahoney. And then, the other communication, that actually, this just came in today, so this was an addition for people. It's actually a thank you letter from Paige Lawson and Shelby Rochati to the committee. And it's, it's a, it's a short letter, and I think I'd like to share it with the group. So I am going to actually read the letter. So as I said, this was received today. Paige and Shelby are both aging out. They've turned 22, so they're, they're aging out of our post program with Mary and Pam. And that's why they, Mary and Pam decided to move to get up, and I said, I'll just stay for a second and listen to their thank you letter. So the thank you letter says, Dear Mr. Neef and school committee members, as we get closer to transitioning, we'd like to take a moment to thank all of you for supporting us and our program. We've been part of the school system for many years. Paige began in Carver school system when she was three years old, and I started in second grade. Although there have been some challenges along the way, we are very grateful to have worked with so many wonderful teachers and specialists. We've also felt supported, sorry, we've also felt the support of the administration, especially in our post years. Paige and I had the opportunity to speak in front of the school committee a few years ago to talk about our experience with the ICE program. And the ICE program is a program, it's a program that allows students to integrate into Bridgewater State University that the school has supported, and Paige and Shelby did present to us. We wanted to let you know how thankful we are for that opportunity. We believe that experience helped us grow and made us even stronger. In fact, we are proud to let you know we've been paid guest lecturers at a variety of local conferences. Wherever we present, we try to make Carver proud. Thank you again, Paige Lawson and Shelby Rochati.
It's good, you guys are very welcome. If you'd like.
It was great. They really appreciate your attention. We really do appreciate our support of the school community, so thank you.
Thank you. James, I just want to take a minute while we're in between to just say, thank you, Scott, for sharing that letter. I remember that presentation from those two young ladies, and they were really impressive, and they did a great job, and I just want to wish them all the best as they move forward.
Yeah, we had a graduation celebration for them last Thursday, Wednesday. One day, I'll say one day last week. One of those days. So we, we just had a graduation celebration for them within the past week as they transition out of the program.
I remember that meeting also, Paul, and they were extremely confident when they were here, and it was really nice.
Yeah, they were great.
And I would like to pass on those same sentiments and wish them the best of luck. And that was a great way to end communications, so thank you. And that was nice. So we can move on to reports from the superintendent?
Okay, first this evening, we'd like, we'd like to welcome Maria Calvo. Maria is a Spanish teacher at the middle high school. And she's gonna share a little bit with us how we've begun to integrate our one-on-one initiative within the school. So Maria's gonna give it, from the classroom perspective, as a teacher, what is she doing with Google Drive? How is she having the students use the one-on-one technology? And then it would be interesting to hear, well, we want, Jenna won't be able to give us that perspective solely, because she doesn't have a device, she's not one-to-one yet. No, but she will be, future, future, future one-to-one soon, hopefully. So we'll turn it over to Maria.
Hi, good night, everybody. So I put together two slides. And in the first one, I wanted to let you know what I see as benefits for our students, having the computers, having a one-on-one. So what I have learned in these few weeks here in, in the school, using the Chromebooks with all my students is I teach three groups of eighth graders, and then I teach 10th graders, and then I have 11 and 12, so I have all the spectrum except 9th graders. So my, the majority of my students have a Chromebook. And what I have seen is that having the technology in the classroom and having the opportunity to have the use wherever they want, they can access anywhere where they have Wi-Fi, they have access to the material from the class. So I see that there is good communication with my students. There is collaboration, so we can have working in teams, working in pairs, even if they are outside the classroom. So there is collaboration among them. It is easy to get organized. My students, many times, as you might have heard stories, that I cannot find my homework, or I do not know where I put that handout. So everything is posted online. So there is like no more losing papers, so I see organization as something good. It is easy to turn in assignments. And I am going to show you an example of this. So I give them an assignment, and right away, if they do it, I get it instantly. So that, that is good from my students' point of view. If my students are in study, and they have time to do the homework assignment, they can be turning in the assignment right from the place where they are in study at home or somewhere else. I have several students whose parents have had vacation outside the traditional vacation time. And the parents contact me, and they say, what can you give them to work on? And I said, do you have access to Wi-Fi? Everything is posted. So even when they are out of town, or if they are not in the, excuse me, if they are not in the school, or if they are sick, they have the chance to access all the material. They can receive instant feedback from me, and we can save a lot of paper, because I am not handing in too much paper. My second slide is about what has this meant for me as a teacher. And here I see that everything that I have, handouts, readings, vocabulary, homework assignments, forecasts, everything, I can post in Google Classroom. I can create, I can share with other teachers, and I can distribute to my students right away without the need of paper. There is no need to carry a flash drive. That I work at home, then I bring it to school, then from school to somewhere else where I am working. There is no need to do that. As long as there is Wi-Fi, I can access Google Drive, and I can have access to all my, my material. I can get also more organized. It's not only the students, but I myself can be more organized. I can give instant feedback to my students. I can collect homework right away. I can see, like, I do a lot of group work and a lot of pair work, so I can see who is working and who is doing what whenever we have activities. I can share announcements, and I can also save a lot of paper myself. So I see many benefits to this. Now I want to show you what I have done with Google Classroom. So, let's say, for example, with my advanced class, Spanish four and five. With them, I use this more as a means of posting everything that they are going to need as materials. If they are going to be out for whatever reason, if they lose the material with them, because they do not have that one-on-one yet, what they have is all the readings that I am going to be using in class, everything is posted online. So I had recently a student who was out for a couple of days. There is no longer the, "What did I miss?", because they know it is posted. So it is, all the, all the, all the readings that are related to the class, they are posted on, online. So this, this unit that I have about food, all the readings that I have related, they are posted there. Then, for example, my Spanish three honors. The topic of my, of my unit is about accidents and first aid. So on this one, I wanna, I wanna show you, for example, I gave them an assignment where I told them this. "I want you to create five sentences describing five different accidents, and your sentences need three different sections. You need a time expression, you need to tell me," I provided it several ones, "you have to tell me what accident you had and what part of the body you hurt." And when I was walking around the classroom, I began seeing that they were having mistakes in the order of the words, or in the tense that they were using. So what I did, I pulled out the one that was making sense to me. Let me show you something, here, for example. And then I used color-coded inside the classroom, and I said, "Okay, I am highlighting in pink the time expressions. If you see the first one, there is a time expression there. In blue, I have the verb and with the activity, with the accident, and then in yellow, I have the body part that you hurt. Follow this format, and then you can just plug in the different pieces of information." And once I explained to them visually, they were looking at the activity, then the result was very good. The sentences that they were writing, they were practically all complete. So, for example, with my students in Spanish one. Today I gave them Spanish three, I told them. We learn how to say different school supplies that you can use in the classroom. So I told them, "Okay, you're gonna write two sentences, and you're gonna tell me what do you need for certain class." So, "¿Qué necesitas para la clase D?", and the activity was, "Write the sentences and tell me school supplies that you need for two classes, name two different ones." So what I was telling you, the instant feedback that I can give, I know that from my twenty-three students, eleven as of now had completed the homework assignment. Twelve are still missing. Now, if you see the due date, it is due tomorrow at 3:00 P.M. I always leave my students, they can do it up until 3:00 P.M., and after that, they can receive homework assignments. So anytime during the day, tomorrow during study, if they stay five minutes after school, I mean, writing two sentences really is, can take them a couple of minutes only to do that. So I know exactly who did it, and I can give instant feedback. So I already graded this one, for example. This student, perfect sentences, there is no mistake. So this student, she already knows that her work was, was fine. And I did this, she can see that I wrote this comment at six forty-seven. So I was here doing some feedback for her. I have to use the time wise, so I was here, okay, feedback, this is first.
We just don't want that to say 2:47 A.M.
This was first.
But I'm sure it does sometimes.
Necesito una calculadora. So I highlighted, and the first one, I said, "Check the ending. This is a feminine word." So I am not fixing it for them, but I am telling them how to fix it. Or the second one, there is a typo, there is an accent missing. So right away, this student, if he or she opens their Google account and they go through that assignment, they know what their mistakes were, and many times when they come back, they say, "I already checked all the mistakes that I had last night," or whatever day. So instantly, if I have five minutes before all of you arrived, and I was here early, so I can do a couple of comments, and I can check my homework assignments, and I can know exactly, just by this assignment from today, that I am still missing half of the class from it. And this helps me with my class, because tomorrow, I can say, "Okay, several of you had mistakes in the agreement of the words. You have to be matching masculine, feminine with nouns." Or, "I see some typos, you have to be careful with accents." So this helps me modify my, my teaching, and tomorrow, that's how I start my class, with the mistakes that I saw tonight. So this instant feedback, to me, is the most important part. Yes, the organization, yes, the posting of the material that they have access, that is always good, but to me, this instant work, and that only happens when all of them have the opportunity to have the computer at home. So I have embraced this. Let me tell you, it's a lot of work, and it is hard to learn, and all of us are learning about this, but with the training that we have received in, in the school as teachers, and then the practice, and every day putting together the material, that really helps our students. So I am really happy with, with this work.
That's great.
I don't know if you have any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Can the students see how many, how many of the other students haven't done their assignment yet?
No, they can't. They will, they will only see that I actually, when I receive all of them, when I click the ones that they have done it, I already return, so they can see that I already returned the work to all the students in that class. And if I slide down, you will see the ones who haven't done the homework assignment. I can see the ones who have not done the assignment, but they will not know. They will only see that I returned their work, and that means it has comments. So my commentary is perfect, there is nothing to fix, or sometimes it's just a little detail, and sometimes it's rewrite this, because we did not understand what, what we're talking about. But the feedback is the, the part that is really nice.
How has that changed your interaction with the students during the day, during the class itself?
Well, I changed the, the way my chairs are, the desks in the classroom, so that I can walk around. And they, I think that by them knowing that everything is right there, there is like no wasting time, they come in, and it is automatic, all of them open their, their Chromebook, and right away, they are organized, they are just working. In my experience, it has been very positive.
Great. How many kids have said their dog eat their Chromebook?
Not one yet.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah. But then, there are some that might not have it, so I have some iPads in the classroom. So they didn't bring it, I'll give them an iPad, so.
Spare.
Right. Any other question?
Not really a question, Maria, but thank you. Thank you for coming today, thank you for this. Thank you for showing that you're willing to adapt to change. I think that just speaks to the quality of teacher that you obviously are showing that you are. It's just great. And, and thank you, Scott, because we mentioned having someone come up and show how they're doing this, and then less than a month and a half later, there is, and that, that's awesome, that we're being heard. But I, I loved it. Thank you very much for this. This was just a great five minutes right now.
And I do think Maria is just an example of what's happening with our teachers at the middle high school. I think that middle high school teachers have, have really put a lot of time and energy and effort and thought into the one-to-one initiative, and make sure that they're integrating the technology in class, and they want to do that to the best of their ability. Same thing's happening at the elementary school, they just don't have the one-to-one devices yet, I mean, the technology may not be there, but I think that in general, our teachers are very open. And they, a lot, and a lot of, a lot of teachers see that that's the reality of the way things are going, and that we need to move in that direction to best prepare our students for, for next steps. So Maria's done a great job, but I think that's indicative of the staff.
And I thought it was an excellent presentation, because you did also note on the training that you've been getting on this, and that there is a pretty cooperative effort with that.
Yeah, the, the training has been from other, from my colleagues.
Yeah.
I mean, teachers that are more knowledgeable and have more experience, they have given us the training, and they have been patient with us, and then we get the class, and then we have to get to work, and, and experience, and make mistakes, and then sometimes, at the beginning, it was like, I asked my students, "Okay, so I did this, how do I do this, that? You have to click that one." I mean, they are the ones teaching me, but after you do it a second time, I think I'm all set, so.
And I think from an instructional standpoint, you know, to echo what Maria said, the concept of that immediate feedback, and then her learning about what students, where students are, she's able to assess where students are in the class in a, in a, you know, a faster fashion. That was always happening, but maybe that would happen the next day or two days later, rather than the evening before, where Maria can say, "Hey, look, I've looked through these homework assignments, and there's, the homework they're doing tonight, I can see that there, there's a common mistake there, and I need to come in tomorrow and address that common mistake." And eventually, that would happen, but it's just happening in a more real-time fashion, which I think there's a, there's a huge benefit to that. And then I think also teachers are really thinking about the assignments they're creating to measure and assess students' growth against the standards, which is what exactly we want them to be doing.
Scott, can I just add?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just also wanted to acknowledge the fact that Maria is part of a rock star volunteer committee at the high school, it's the middle high school tech committee, that they meet either once a month or twice a month, depending on what we have going on, but all of them volunteering their time, they're all willing to test drive these new aspects of how to integrate technology to increase student engagement, and I'm just grateful for her time and the time in the committee.
Thank you.
And Jen, I don't know what your thoughts are, because I know you're not one-to-one, but I'm sure many of your teachers have started to integrate Drive into regular practice. Have you seen that at all?
Not really, because one of those one grades that really doesn't have them, so a lot of teachers are like, a lot of my teachers are.
Well, ten, eleven, ten, eleven, ten, eleven and twelve don't, don't have them overall. You're not, you're not the only grade that doesn't have them.
Oh, yeah. You know where we're gonna get them?
Yeah, well, that's the goal. You'll see that as part of the plan, you'll see that as part of the plan tonight. So, but has there been any integration of technology in terms of, so your teachers using Drive, just the aspects of Drive?
Definitely. But a lot of teachers prefer to do paper, because I guess it's just what they've grown up with, so there's, they're either on like one seventh spectrum or the other. Like, I know that Ms. Dean has a lot of trouble with technology, I love her though, but a lot of people prefer, like, it's a lot, it's a good resource, like Ms. Calvo said, to edit with foreign language, and then like with papers and stuff, but a lot of teachers do tend to use them, even if we don't have Chromebooks.
Thank you.
I think, Scott, I also wrote one thing down, as, as we move forward to that one-on-one idea, that also means no more snow days.
There are, there are, there are.
That raises the need for snow days.
There are school districts that are considering not having the need.
That's policy at Coyle Cassidy right now.
There are some school districts that are thinking about that.
No snow days.
If it's all one-to-one, the assignments can be out there, and that can be counted as a day of school.
Curlled up by the fireplace.
Snort a go by Wi-Fi. Maria, so thank, thank you very much, man.
Thank you very much, yes.
Thank you very much, Maria.
So, moving forward to the enrollment reports.
Yep, so I just wanted to share you our October first enrollment reports and talk a little bit about trends in terms of student population. And here, there's, in your drive folder, there were three separate documents. One was just our overall enrollment as of the October one numbers, and then our homeschooling numbers and our private school numbers. Overall, our student enrollment is down fourteen students from last year at this time, but that's less than one percent over the past year. This is reflective of a trend that's been predicted for the district, that our enrollment will really steady over the next few years, and stay, maintain level, kind of where we are, that's been the projection, and I think we see that in that numbers. You know, so we're down fourteen students, but like I said, that's less than one percent. We actually have one fewer students enrolled in alternative educational choices, private, religious, vocational, charter, homeschools, or school choice as compared to last year. As of October first of last year, we had two-hundred-and-nineteen students in such programs. Sorry, as October first of this year, we had two-hundred-and-nineteen students. Compared to last year, we had two-twenty, which is only a reduction of one. But, and I gave you an overview of that comparison. So we have some fewer students attending private religious schools and vocational schools. Our charter school number was up by five, our homeschool number was up by two, and our school choice number was up by one. In terms of the charter, because I just know that's been a hot issue a little bit, we had five additional students at Sturgis Charter School down in Hyannis, two additional students at Rising Tide in Plymouth, but we lost two students to virtual academies. Last year, we had four students enrolled in virtual academies that were considered charter schools, this year we only have two. So our overall charter school number is plus-five in comparison to last year. So that's kind of a general overview of the reports, and you know, really, I'll take any questions or thoughts that you had in terms of when you looked, when you looked at the documents, if, if there are any.
It seems pretty, almost flat, I mean, it's the same numbers.
Yeah, little, little changes here and there within, but pretty much ultimately it works out to be the same.
I thought it was interesting, to me, the numbers, and I know I've seen the homeschool before, but I must have just forgotten, it just seemed like higher than I was remembering it to be, so it was a little surprising to me, but I also just thought I would share a personal anecdote with somebody who had been out of district, and this family brought a child or children back to the district and said that they're getting a much greater sense of community here than they were before, that one of the big pros for them coming back was that, you know, when you've got people from all these different towns going to a school, you don't have that sense of community and belonging like you do here, and they were really happy to be back, so that was kind of nice.
In, in terms of homeschooling, it is forty students this year as compared to thirty-eight last year. Meredith is our director of homeschool in terms of reviewing those applications, and I believe those forty students represent twenty-five families. So obviously, there are some families where they've made a decision to homeschool all of their children, so they have multiple children who are being homeschooled. When you look at the breakdown by grade, it's pretty level. You know, the grade four has six students. Besides that, if you look across by grade, it's one, two, three, you know, so we have two or three, and on average, we have two or three students in each grade level who are homeschooling and making that choice. But I do, I would agree, sometimes I think people would be, when they hear forty, they say, "Well, that's a large, that's a, that's a big number."
Scott, do we reach out and poll these people at all? Or, not to be intrusive in, in their decisions, but just ask them if there was, you know, just why they made moves, or what they felt things were lacking?
And that, that varies, so every student who's gonna, in terms of homeschooling specifically, students have to, in essence, they have to provide us with an educational plan, and they have to apply and notify us for homeschooling. Sometimes it's all done in writing, and there's never a sit-down conversation. At times, there are sit-down conversations, actually, we've had a couple within the last couple of weeks, where students have come in and given specific reasons as to why they're going to homeschool. You know, and there, there's times that those discussions generate, you know, us advocating in, you know, in an appropriate manner for students to return to school and see what we can do to support them in terms of returning to school. You know, and doing that in a respectful way, because ultimately, being able to homeschool is their right, and they have, they have the ability to do that. So in terms of actual conversations, I think the most conversations actually take place with our, with our homeschool students, more so than maybe our students who are going to charter schools. I think our students who are going to charter schools are just applying to the charter, then they find out that they're accepted, and then they move on. And we've talked about this a little bit, it's something that the district hasn't really taken a strong look at in the past, and I think with our, with our charter school number growing a little bit. I mean, some of that growth is out of the reality of, Rising Tide used to not be, they didn't used to not offer through high school, but now they do, so Rising Tide is now through grade twelve, so I think that's increased our numbers there a little bit. And Sturgis has become very, very popular in terms of the services that they offer. But maybe we do need to do some more specific outreach to our students who are enrolled in our charter schools.
Because there's two spots, there's the initial, you know, "I'm going because of this, 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 this," and then there's the person that's graduating, and did the school fulfill what you were looking for? So it's two spots, I would always find it interesting to see.
Yeah, and, and it is something, it is something we haven't, we haven't done that research on as a district, that I think that we need to, because that, that number's growing. So there's definitely more conversation, as I said, with charter school versus, homeschool versus charter. You know, our, our private religious academies, vocational. You know, our, our private religious academies, vocational schools, those actually, there's actually a lot of conversation around that, more so maybe than the charters, because their application process goes through our guidance office. So students who are gonna go to Old Colony, you know, the school's really actively involved in that. We, the school actually sets up a tour for them to visit Old Colony, we're a part of the Old Colony Regional District. It's really presented as a choice and, and we have a lot of active discussions with those families who are looking at that vocational option. Same with the Aggie School. And, and a little bit, like I said, same with the private school. So a lot of students who are deciding to go onto private schools, there is a conversation that occurs because the school is part of the admission process. Even if you're going to a Tabor Academy or B.C. High, those students, as middle school students, sort of like a college application process, are looking for letters of reference. They're looking for contact with the administration and the guidance department, where charter schools maybe not so, not, not as much. That, that process, that, that application process is not the same. So it's just not the same level of conversation going on. So I do think it's something that we need to look at and investigate.
And just to add on that quickly too, there's one financial component to that, and actually the negative is the charter school went up and the school choice went up, and that's both the two that we actually lose money on in terms of chapter 70, so.
And, and the school choice went from one to two.
It did, no, not major, but it went up.
A huge increase, but it did go, it did go from.
No, but the charter school went up by five, so.
Yeah, so it's something we have to look at.
Well, I think, Andrew, also, if you combine, I mean, Old Colony is, if you add all the others up, they're close to about what, what we send to Old Colony every year also, if you take every other one of them combined. So it's, I mean, it's pretty spread out.
Yeah, no, I, but I always thought the vocational filled a void that we couldn't offer.
Right.
So I always understood that one, but it was just more if you're gonna move in other avenues, why? And then was that, was that worthwhile? I mean, did you, did you get, did they meet the needs that you were hoping for that we weren't even? And there's no, no real way to find that out unless you ask.
Absolutely. Are we ready to move on to Capitol Lake?
Capitol Lake plan.
So I'm gonna tell this to Brad, Brad's gonna review our Capitol Lake plan for FY18 with the committee, and Meredith is gonna pull it up.
Just click that button.
All right, so if you guys click on the header for that, that'll bring you to a PowerPoint. And the town requests a 10-year capital improvement plan. Just wait till it's up and running.
You can start.
Okay. All right. So just some quick background on this is Scott and I had met with all the department heads and the directors of transportation, we also met with Lee, the mechanic, to go over what the overall department's needs were. I'm not sure if that had been a past practice or not, but that's what we brought forward. So if you look on FY18, our grand total request is 922,000 for that fiscal year. And I'm on the third slide. All right, so central office and technology. The request this year is for $40,000 for a new second-floor HVAC system. It's original from since the building was purchased. It's actually on a split system, which represents the business office and the super tenet's office, and this will replace all units and ductwork. Another $100,000 for technology is for the one-on-one initiative to get Chromebooks for grades six, seven, and 11. So we have one lucky student here who hopefully will get one next year. Transportation. This stays in line with what we've been getting for the most part. The first one is 75,000 for a 71-passenger regular transportation bus, that's a routine replacement. $90,000 for a 42-passenger or four-wheelchair equipped bus. We've seen an increase in wheelchair needs and the age on the, our current wheelchair buses is, it's due for replacement. Next one is 70,000, which is for a 20-passenger minibus, and this is for our students for, in pre-K and our special needs, and actually has built-in modified specific seating for those students. And it's definitely an area that we've seen a growing need in terms of transportation as well. The elementary school is not represented. As we know, we're getting a new school, so we decided to stay away from any requests for them. The middle high, $100,000 for new culinary classroom. This includes all the equipment and designing of a new classroom area, as well as the ventilation and everything else needed to actually run that program. $40,000 to replace the new clock system, and you guys can, Scott, feel free to jump in on this. I was told that it actually runs on, the buildings run on two separate clock systems. This, a brand-new system will clear that and we will have accurate clocks. I know if you walk in one part of the building, it's five minutes slower than the other. This will watch that. $150,000 will replace the fire alarm field devices. This replaces the visual and noise signal devices, and this will be 150,000 requested for this year and also an additional 150 for next year. And part of the problem with this we have right now is when we have an alarm call, we run tests, we only get a zone area, we don't get an actual read of what signal device is actually getting that read from. So this will replace that and we'll be able to tell specifically where that signal's coming from. $100,000 to purchase new roof condensing units. This is part of the MSBA roof project. These are specifically for the units. They're original from the building. The MSBA actually would not cover the units themselves, so they were gonna take off the current units and put them back on. I know a lot of them are failing, when $100,000 would buy us all brand-new units, and actually, MSBA, while they're doing the project, will install the new ones right onto that.
Yeah, so the, through the accelerated repair project, which is later on in the agenda, so we've been officially approved for that project, they, they pay to take, they pay for all the process of taking them off the roof and putting them back on, but not for the units themselves.
$50,000 is to replace stage lighting and controls. It's antiquated system, it's non-functional equipment. $25,000 is replaced, is the start of replacing portions of the school's ceiling tiles that were damaged from the rain and various other conditions throughout the years. $25,000 replace student desks. New desks for each department are great, we haven't figured out what specifically we need yet. I'm under the understanding though that we still have a lot of the original desks with the building. This will start to get a replacement plan in place. $10,000 for a new athletic field study. I know one was done last year, two years ago. The recommendation after meeting with Mike Schultz was, based on the determination of the results from that field study previously, was we need to be really ADA compliant and we really want a more sufficient and in detail report that we did not get from them in terms of if we left the existing conditions, should we leave it that way? There's a couple bathroom issues in terms of ADA compliance that if you build certain sections of a brand-new bleacher system, you have to actually have, I think it's one bathroom for 25 seating areas or whatever the exact breakdown is, and that cannot be hit with our current, our current bleachers, so we would have to take a look at that. $30,000 represents athletic upgrades, which is a $15,000 split between a new athletic training room equipment and $15,000 for outdoor bleaches, bleachers, benches, and a batting cage area. The batting cage netting has been donated, and this would just be specifically for the poles needed.
In turn, can I just jump on that one for a second? In terms of the, the trainer's room, so the trainer's room was in the back of the gym, and as part of the gym floor project, that room had to be removed. One of the reasons why was we had an ice machine that was back on the floor. We, and obviously we're not gonna be able to maintain an ice, we don't wanna maintain an ice machine and water on top of the new gym floor. So as part of that project, we moved the athletic trainer's room into what used to be a closet, and the town has approved us to go forward in terms of actually doing an outside door, so there'll be a door directly outside to the side of the gym, to the athletic fields that will go into the trainer's room. Also, so the, currently under the, under the, the project for the gym floor, we're able to move into that space, create the door that we need outside, redo the floor in that room, and that's being covered as part of the project. This is, would be an additional, to say if we're gonna move into a new space, there's some of the equipment that we had was aged and out of date, and really we're saying if we're gonna move into a new, as we move into a new space, it'd be great if we were able to bring in and upgrade the facilities for the athletic trainer, so that's being put in as a separate request. But I wanted people to know that as part of the current project, the trainer's room is at being moved into the storage closet, which was in the back left of the gym, and that's happening currently.
All right, and also the 17-5 is to replace the cafeteria dishwasher with caffeine. It's actually original, it came off a aircraft carrier. It's very large and it will cost up to $6,000. It's $3,000 for parts, $3,000 for labor to fix, so we're looking for a brand-new one, obviously more cost-effective that way. And here we have upcoming middle high items. So for FY, FY19, we're looking at renovating all the restrooms at the middle high for 330,000. Looking at, the proposed right now, the quote we got back or the proposal we got back from the prior field study was 3.2 million for an athletic field. FY20 is a locker room replacement, which is 1.1. FY21 is replace all the lockers, which, at 400,000. FY22, auditorium renovation for half a million. And FY23 is replace all lock systems for the exterior doors for $400,000.
And this, this list kind of represents, in our mind, one of the big-ticket items that need to be done at the middle high school beyond the roof boilers and the accelerated repair project. You know, we put them out over time, and maybe it doesn't happen over these five years specifically. We put the requests out that way. Just more in terms of identifying, in our mind, these are the big-ticket items that need to be replaced. It is, I know there's been a lot of conversation around the track and field project, and so that's, you know, the high. We kind of prioritize these almost as a list of, this is how we would prioritize them. The athletic field first, then the locker room, then the lockers, then the auditorium renovation, then replacing the interior lock system, which is the lock-and-key system inside the building. So we said, what are our big-ticket items and how would we prioritize them? So, you know, obviously, we'll be working with the town and Capitol Lake in terms of where these things actually fall, but almost viewing the five-year span as our priority list of, of one to five, with the athletic field being the top priority, the, you know, the track and field project.
The more in depth.
That was kind of just the methodology behind how that, where that list came from.
Yep. And the more in-depth 10-year plan is in the body paragraph, the link on that.
Where do I get it?
If you go back into the agenda and in the body paragraph.
Plan is shared in Excel.
So that first sheet just has the grand total of pulling of all the departments, and then individual, the individual tabs have the actual breakdown of specific projects. So if you wanna go into the middle high, Meredith? Anyone? Yeah. Yeah, we don't have to go into specifics on it.
No.
Any other questions on that?
Actually, can you explain, Scott, or Brad, the, I'll go from the, from the last one first, the locking system, what's the, what's the problem with the lock?
So currently, all, all of our, the locks are the original locks in the building. And there's, there's, there's a couple issues there in terms of functionality and replacement of some of those locking systems. And then the other piece of it is, there is, there is a low-level security concern of, there's been, there's a lot of people who've had keys to that building over time, and, and I don't know if there's been a great job in terms of those keys always being returned. So there's a little bit of a sense in terms of that key locking system that there's a lot of keys out there. You know, can I, I can't put any kind of real number on that, that's just a general sense of, they are the original from when the building opened. So all the lock, all the locks in the interior of the building are the original locks from when the building opened. The exterior, we've had new exterior doors and we have a new, we have a keyed entry system, a card entry system, so that's all fairly new within the last 10 years. So we upgraded to that system in terms of actually entering the facility. But once you're inside the facility, it's all the original locks. So it's actually talking about replacing the locks on each individual classroom door and interior doors within the building.
Would that be something worth moving up on the schedule instead of the, the renovating the restrooms or?
There are, it's all, it's all priorities. So, you know, I get, I get, I myself got nervous when I said it's a low-level security concern, because I don't want people to think that, oh, the building's unsafe. I mean, ultimately, there, the reality is, we have a keyed entry system that.
The interior.
Right, it's the interior doors and they have a keyed entry system in terms of accessing the building. And the exterior doors are actually gonna be replaced as part of the door windows and roof project. And that system's gonna be, maintains the same system, it doesn't allow for the replacement of the system, but that, we feel the security of the perimeter of the building is strong. And right now, there's only, there's only one keyed door on the exterior of the building. And so the entire exterior of the building has one, one keyed door, and everything else is swipe pad. And that, that door, that lock has been replaced, so that we feel confident that key's not out there. But I think it's just more of a functional repair issue, and some of those locks are breaking down, some of them aren't working appropriately, some of the keys aren't working. So when we looked at it, when we looked at it as an administrative team, we said, that's the, that's the priority list we came up with. We had that actually as the lowest priority. You know, obviously, you know, if the, if the committee feels we need to take a look at that again, I'm willing to take a look at that. You know, but in essence, if we said these five big-ticket items, the track and field, the locker room replacement, the student lockers, the auditorium, we felt like that was the, the lower end of the priority. In terms of the other one, the locker, the locker rooms are the original locker rooms. Mr. Santos works in one of them on a daily basis, he might be able to give us some more detailed explanation of them. I've spent a lot of time in those locker rooms as well. They're the original locker rooms in the building in 1988. The lock facilities are really inadequate. In the girls' room, in particular, actually more in the boys' room, there's a shower stall issue. The showers really aren't utilized enough. It actually results, Dave could, if Dave was here, he could explain the issue behind this better than I can, so I apologize in advance for my lack of being able to describe the issue. But it also, in essence, because the showers aren't used and the system, the flush system isn't used, it actually leads to a backup of waste smell. And so the, the girls' locker room actually at times stinks awfully. And it's for, it's not because of anything that's happening in there, it's actually because of what's not happening in there. Now, they do actually, they flush water through the system, because that's supposed to help, and they do that on a regular basis, but ultimately, the shower stalls that have been in there are unused and really need to be removed. So our recommendation would actually be to take those out and create privacy stalls in which, you know, obviously, we'd be looking to have someone come in and help us engineer what the locker room space would look like, but actually create some privacy stalls instead of the individual shower stalls and then the girls' locker room. So we, we put the locker room as a higher priority in terms of upgrading the facility. Same with student lockers, the student lockers are the original ones from the building. There, there were some new lockers with the renovation, but they're only in the, in the 1997 renovation, there's some new lockers in the building. It's a very small percentage of the overall lockers. And those, the lockers are also getting to the point of Ray M. Roll, our maintenance man does a great job of putting, sticking them together, but some of the, some of the, he's not able to get replacement parts for all of our lockers and they're just, they're just breaking down through age. And we also think we benefit from, our locking system is skinny lockers, and the reality of today's backpacks and textbooks and Chromebooks and those types of things don't fit in the skinny locker. And if we were gonna go to a locker replacement, I thought it would be go to a wider tiered locker system, so we'd have up and down with wider lockers, because we think they're actually more functional for today's students based on when they all put it in 1988. Just here, since I've hit on the other big-picture items, I'll hit on the auditorium. And the auditorium is, you know, that's an interesting one we could talk about in terms of, so this year, we put in a lighting replacement. The reality is, the sound system, the light system, the auditorium does not work. It's not functional. It's the original sound and lighting system from when the building was built. We have purchased outside sound, but we do not use the house system at all. So, you know, so we have speakers and we have a soundboard to tie into it, but it's not tie, it's not the way it really should be. And then the lighting has become a real issue. I mean, ultimately, the auditorium was a huge public space from graduation to town meeting, to drama, to, you know, it's a highly-used space where the lights really. meeting to drama to, you know, it's a highly-used space where the lights really aren't functional and can't be used the way they're supposed to be in that type of setup. Now, we actually, so we put that in as a this year request. I mean, is that something that could all be bundled into a long-term redoing of the auditorium? It could be. Obviously, we could clearly talk about that and discuss that. Again, the auditorium seats, the original seats from when the building was open in 1988. You know, we're at that point where a lot of these things, there's a lot of things in that building that are original to when the building was open. I don't know if that was too, beyond the scope of your question.
You hit a couple of them. Thank you. The 50,000 for the lighting, stage lighting and controls, is that a number, just a basic estimate or have you contacted?
That is a, that is a basic estimate. That is not a, so we haven't had a lighting engineer come in and give us a study with a specific number.
Okay.
So Scott, looking, and I'm sorry because I can't, nothing's pulling up on that right now. You said the number for this year, Brad, was what?
The total for this fiscal year eighteen request was 922,500.
And that's buses and everything, right? That's buses and everything you talked about there?
Yeah, that's everything total, yep.
So is there a prioritization of that list or is that something that's just gonna kind of be hashed out with capital outlay or?
My prioritization of that list would be the technology to continue the movement of the one-on-one and the rooftop units.
And then whatever falls into place from that?
And then whatever falls into place after that.
Okay.
That's my perspective and then obviously I'd take the, you know, the committee's perspective on that. But, you know, ultimately, I feel that, you know, we want, we, you know, we had the presentation tonight in terms of feeling like the one-on-one in grades seven, eight, nine has been a successful transition. We'd like to continue that and have it be building-wide. I think it's the direction to go in. And then obviously, it just makes sense to replace those rooftop units when we're in the process of doing the roof and having them removed and having NSBA pay. Or have the district be reimbursed at our reimbursement rate to have them take the units off the roof, put them back on the roof. And obviously, the community's paying for part of that, but the NSBA is picking up part of that cost as well. So in my mind, those would be the two top priorities.
Well, I think that was when we were talking about the school and putting the school there, that was one of the concerns with fifty-eight, when they were ripping the road up, if we were gonna be able to put some piping in down there while they had the road ripped up, but we couldn't afford that in. So I think if that's something that, as you say, can be done when that's being done and we save a lot to do that, that would be greatly supported.
You know, the net, if we were gonna continue down that prioritization of this year, again, I think this is something we're gonna work with the town on in terms of where things actually finally get placed in the capital outlay, you know. But if I was gonna continue on my prioritization this year, Brad, you can weigh in because you've had direct conversations with some of the members as well, is, you know, I would look at the stage lighting, you know, and then we have, again, as I said, we have to have that discussion whether we tie that into a larger renovation of the auditorium project, which might have to be farther down the road. I'm open to that discussion. And then I would really, I think there'd be a real benefit for our students in terms of programming if we could work towards redoing that, redoing the culinary classroom. It's such a strong program in the building that has really, he's done great things with little means.
Hmm.
Which is great. It's great to do great things with little means, but that-
Can we find another aircraft carrier to get a dishwasher?
You see, I don't know if, you know, in terms of the dish pos replacement and those things, but that would kind of be my list from this year. And then obviously, again, part of this is to get your input in terms of what your thoughts are in terms of where you would prioritize these items.
I've always been a fan of putting it up there so we know what the need is because I think that's one thing that I've noticed over the years where we're able to see some of these things that have been on the list for a long time get checked off. And I think it makes them aware of the need that we have. And clearly, we would love to walk out of there with everything, but it's nice to know that there's a sort of prioritized list of how we want to present that. Because, you know, when we get towards the next item and the things that we start talking about, there's a lot going on. And there are certain things, as you said, with the roof that I think it's important to save a lot and do it now when we can. But I, it just, it's good to let them know that that need is there, but it seems like a lot to be looking for in a sum.
No, I totally agree, but I guess if you don't put it out there that that's the amount, then when you bring it up again next year or why something gets pushed off, it's there.
It's not new, right?
I certainly don't think we're gonna get the full 900,000. I mean, it would be nice, but-
Well, I mean, I think somewhere in there, if we're looking at, and I know there's been some interest in other areas, but if we're looking at the athletic fields and other, I think somewhere that, that small amount and maybe if capital outlays not into that somewhere within the school, we may be able to find that money to do that new estimation on the field.
Oh, the field study?
Yeah, the field study.
And we can have a discussion whether that, you know, I thought on that was we've gone back and forth about that a little bit. Michael and I have actually spoken about that a little bit. So we have spoken about that. You know, the current study doesn't include the press box either because that's also another piece here. Notice the press box is listed here as a separate item. We've kind of looked at saying the track and field project is, the track and field project inside the fence of everything that needs to happen in there. And that, obviously, that's the biggest item on the whole list. So ultimately, there's gonna be some facts, some driving factor of where that item ends up in terms of making other decisions as we go forward. You know, so in terms of, again, priorities, we have it, right now, we have it listed for two years out. You know, that's also a priority that we need to talk about in terms of getting that project done.
Would you think that might have a, require a subcommittee? Require something to field, you know, where we're gonna go? I mean, that's a number that, at the end of the day, it's not just something we can just be like, hey, it's here, we need to do it. I mean, how, before you speak, how close, honestly, do you believe we are to not being able to host home track and field meets?
Which is, this has been there for four or five years. I was gonna, four or five years ago, it was like, well, you know, nobody wants to come. So, I mean, where are we at with that realistically?
I don't know if, I don't know if I can give you a realistic timeframe of, so the bottom line is we are hosting track and field meets.
Right now?
Right now. And we, and I, and there's no move to not host them there next year. I'm not gonna say we're at imminent danger of not hosting the meets. But there's a reality piece of, I mean, if you go out to the field, it is clearly breaking down. And there's areas of it where it's separated, it's open, you know, it also becomes a safety issue as well.
Sure.
So I'm not looking to make threats to people or say that we don't do this, we can't hold meets. But it's, I think it's an issue that needs to be addressed. I know, I see Mr. Malowski is raising his hands. I don't know if he has some thoughts on this. I don't know if, if anyone has a team.
I think he had a cram.
All good comments, thank you, Michael Malowski, Town Administrator. I think this is just a good opportunity to kind of lay out what's been put in front of you. And when we start to look at how projects are funded in town, again, for clarification, we have a set aside capital money that kind of comes from our personal property growth that isn't necessarily reoccurring growth and out of that fund pays for all our debt services and our capital projects. The good news that I can say is it's probably a high likelihood that everything you saw there can be funded over a 10-year period. The question is, is where's the cash flow in what particular year to allow that to happen, which gets back to the priority piece. So, you know, Scott and I have been working on this list with Brad and also Dave Sigintoff. And, you know, these are all viable projects that need to be done. It's just a matter of when they fit in. For a little historical component, last year, prior to putting together a final capital outlay budget, it was your superintendent, your facilities director, myself and the DPW superintendent that went through everything, knowing what the limited amount of funds are and tried to prioritize it. So when this was submitted, it was more or less a joint document that was submitted to the capital outlay, again, prioritizing from the big picture. It's very important for the school committee to prioritize what you need. Then from there, all the other departments are doing that and then we have to look at the big picture. I do want to alert you to a couple structural issues we're gonna have with our cash flow on this. And that is, this year, if I look at a draft, which I have here of the request, which includes everything that's gone over here, we're about $550,000, $600,000 over budget for the request. And again, that's town-wide, that's just not school. But this year's a good year because we're gonna have well over a million dollars to invest in capital. However, next year, we're gonna start having the debt service for the renovations of the middle high school, where we do the roof, the boilers and the windows. And at that time, we're probably gonna have the debt service too for the new police station coming online. The fire station's already budgeted and all other debts budgeted in here, but those will be two more things coming online. So where I mentioned this year, we have well over a million dollars to invest in capital. Next year, because that debt service is coming on, we're gonna have about a half a million dollars. So next year's gonna be a real tight year. And what's also happening is a couple of the existing long-term leases the town has are coming offline over the next few years. So it's gonna create an opening for some more projects to happen. But I think as you get into your next conversation, one of the things you're gonna hear is, well, how can we afford to buy a new bus and everything when we're having operational issues? Well, the issue is there are two different pots of money. And again, you know, this is something the town has set up so we can make sure that we can afford to maintain our infrastructure. Because if you delay things, then they get more expensive and that has created problems in the town and we don't want to go down that road. The last thing I'll say, and this is also very good news from the standpoint of the football field and the track, is that the CPC has scheduled a meeting for this Thursday. I have been in touch with the director, I haven't had a chance to talk to Scott yet today. But if he's available, then we're going to present this concept to them, which I know they're already supportive about moving forward. And primarily, that's because we're having some significant savings with the school and with some other projects that where it originally looked like this piece, which is gonna have to be a bonded piece, would have to be pushed out further down the road, there may be an opportunity of accelerating this recreation project. This wouldn't be paid directly out of cash, or this would be built into our future debt service. So you wouldn't be paying the 3.2 million for year one. All other projects, we try to pay in cash, but these big projects, we try to hold off down the road. So, you know, again, that's another good thing that's coming. And we do need to go back and relook at the scope for that because unfortunately CPC can't pay for artificial turf. And given funding constraints we have, I don't believe the town has the money to pay for artificial turf unless it comes from CPC. So that's one of the things that need to be looked at to see how that happens. And if you get the new recreation facility complex at the elementary school and then we can work on getting one up in the next couple of years at the middle high school, I think that'll be great for the kids to have an avenue to do extracurricular activities outside of things we don't want them to do. So again, all good news. And our intention, Mr. Chairman, is really just to complete, follow the process that we did last year, is once each committee votes on what their priorities are, then the superintendent and I and appropriate key staff sit down and try to put together a balanced budget over 10 years. And then that's what goes to capital outlay and then they start to dig into that real deep and determine, you know, if they want to make any modifications to that. But, you know, it's worked well in the past few years, but just for more notifications to where we're heading.
Thank you.
So we would be looking for a vote to support the plan as approved, I mean, as presented, but obviously, we can open that, I don't know if there's further discussion or if there's a motion or?
Well, I mean, we've had some discussion. I guess we could discuss the motion when we make it, but are there any other questions relative to what we've been covering?
I have a quick one.
Sure.
The 40,000 for the clock system, is that, how old is that? Is it original to the building?
That is also the replacement, that is also original to the building. I will say that the director of facilities, Dave Siegenthal, felt that this was a priority item, that it needed to be moved up. I mean, ultimately, the clocks that have been in the building, the clocks run.
There's no way to fix them?
No, they're actually, they're, the clocks are actually all, as a clock system, they're all aligned. So they're all aligned on a common system. Doesn't necessarily always match our bell system. And that's what I'm talking about, a little bit through different systems, but they're all hardwired throughout the entire building. So it's not a, it's not a system that can just be, we can replace this part and that's gonna fix it.
So that's where the cost will come in, is the hot wire? So the new system would also have to be hardwired or are there new technologies out there through Wi-Fi and Bluetooth and things like that?
That I don't know.
Okay.
But something we could clearly investigate.
Okay. Thank you.
Analog time, that's an old thing, isn't it?
You know what?
So any other questions, Paul, anything?
Nope. Scott, would all the items have a rank to them? So if at the end of the day, let's say the number, you got 922, I don't know, we're able to do 800, do you already have as far as what would get deducted off?
Well, that becomes part of the discussion through, with the town, with capital outlay in terms of, yeah, so we have a priority level of where we would move things. And, you know, if it got, if I need to go back and if we had to make a decision between, you know, the field alarm, the fire alarm field devices and replacing the clock system, we'd bring Dave in and talk to Michael.
And would that come to us again or no?
It may not come back to the committee. So it's not, we're not looking for the committee to prioritize one through 10 this year's capital requests.
Okay.
I'd be looking for you to give us the discretion to make those decisions.
And that was relative to the question that I asked Andrew, but I guess, do you have any input to that at all, that, any concern or anything that you'd like to?
No, I was just wondering how it got broken down, how it got figured out. Because you see all the items and, you know, and some of these, obviously, if you're replacing things on the roof, you do that before you would worry about interior tiles. You know what I mean? Like, where does it all, where does it all line up? So we just see, I'm just speaking, I just see the dot next to it in the item. So I'm just trying to figure out where do they all align if all of the, if we're not able to fulfill everything.
Well, I think there's different levels of prioritization too, where something could be low enough where it's not high on the priority list, but it's a low sum. So you could fit that in or, you know what I mean? I think-
Sure. Oh, no, no, I understand how you can do it. I was just curious how it worked as far as the backend, because I know we're gonna approve the number and then these items, we don't know if all of them will get fulfilled. So I'm just curious how.
And I, I mean, I have no problem with updating the committee as that process is ongoing.
Yeah, I know you will.
So I-
So just to be clear too, we're approving that estimation.
Estimation, that number. Estimated number.
Yes. So is there specific language for?
We're just looking for a vote to approve the proposed capital plan to be shared with the town.
Okay. Accept any motion on that?
So I'd like to make a motion that we take a vote on the proposed FY18 capital plan of 922,500.
To approve, yeah?
I'll second.
Just a question on that though, is it, it's not just on this year though, you're looking for the long-term approval?
Ultimately, the 10-year plan gets developed every year, so it's always shifting and changing. But it is technically a 10, it is a 10-year plan. That's what we've been asked to produce, so we've produced a 10-year plan. So I think it should be a vote of approval with the 10-year plan with the knowledge of a new 10-year plan's gonna come back next year that might look a little different. This one looks a little different than the one from previous years because, you know, opportunities change. We don't know what's gonna happen over the next year in terms of being able to maybe fulfill some of these needs.
So do you need me to modify my motion?
Sure.
All right. So I would like to propose a modified motion to take a vote on the capital 10-year plan as presented here tonight.
I'll second.
Any other questions at all? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous?
Thank you. So our next item is, Brad's gonna give us a budget update in terms of a projection for our FY18 budget. So we're gonna do a comparison of the FY17 adjusted budget to the projected FY18 budget. Brad's gonna do this by DESI code, which is District-wide Leadership and Organization, Instructional Services, Other Services, Operations, Benefits and Out-of-District Programs. The goal of the presentation is to assist people in gaining an understanding of why we have some projected shortfalls. Before Brad begins his presentation, I just want to give some stipulations that I think are already known factors, but I just want people to, just I think it's beneficial if[1749.86] are already known factors, but I just want people to, just I think it's beneficial if we reiterate them. First, we started with a structural deficit from FY '17 of over $400,000. That FY '17 shortfall, the committee covered in previous meetings through using reserves from circuit breaker, school choice, foster care, and by reducing spending. Ultimately, we didn't solve that shortfall. You know, we reduced, we did not rehire two full, three positions that were equivalent to two full-time equivalences. It was a .5 reading teacher, a .5 behavioral specialist, and a mechanics assistants. Those are the only positions that in essence, you know, were reduced from the budget in terms of overall structural costs. Everything else was covered through either reducing spending or from using reserves. So that structural deficit going, that structural deficit going forward is still there. The other thing I want you to know is, as we've built the projections for our FY '18, we've built back the supply line items and operating budgets for the schools, transportation, and custodial to the original FY '17 levels. Those were built back because we felt that was appropriate to have them in that place. We, those, those line items were appropriate. You know, the district has gone into some real austerity measures in terms of not spending. We don't want to build a budget for next year based on that concept of not spending. So, in terms of these budget projections, those items have been restored to where they were for the proposed FY '17 level. You know, obviously, as we go forward and make decisions, maybe we'll make decisions in the long term to reduce some of those specific operating budgets, but we wanted to build, build them back, at least so the committee was aware of them. So those are just kind of some, you know, gender, big ideas that I wanted to touch on prior to Brad actually going through the specific budget information. I don't know if Brad, if there's anything you want to add on to that, it's just like a setting the stage.
Nope.
Any questions on that piece?
No.
No?
Okay.
All right. So, excellent. So right now, this is just our current estimated school budget timeline for FY '18. So November, December, we'll finalize budget with department heads. I know this is very far behind schedule, but with me being full-time, starting next July 1, being here full-time, that'll help expedite this process. In January
And Brad, the only one to interrupt on that is that, obviously, we didn't, we didn't do any projecting for FY '18 until Brad came on board. And we knew we had hired Brad, and we wanted him to be fully involved in the process. And so even in terms of getting operational budgets out to schools and departments, within the school department, that was a little behind what our normal timeline would be for that, just because we wanted Brad to be fully involved in that process.
All right. So we're looking at, January will be our administrative team meeting with the budget presentation to school committee. February and March is the public hearing slash school committee approval, and then April town meeting. And as Scott had mentioned, this is the FY '18 DESI Function Code. It's broken down by the series numbers. So the 1,000 series is district-wide leadership and admin. 2,000 series, instructional services. 3,000 is other services such as athletics and transportation. 4,000 is operations and facilities. 5,000 is fixed charges such as benefits, and 9,000 is out-of-district programs. So the 1,000 series, specific included in that is school committee, superintendent, and business office expenses. And you can see the adjusted FY '17 number. That's one thing I want to highlight. All these numbers for FY '17 are from the second modification you guys made. They're not the original approved numbers. It's the latest approved number. And that represents overall a 4.4% increase from the previous fiscal year. The 2,000 series, which represents professional development, curriculum, technology, principal, teachers, guidance, salaries, and all expenses. As you can see, it had a 6.5% increase overall, just under a million dollars. The key here though, is the offsets. Previous year, we had a higher number budgeted for offset. However, this year, there was no kindergarten grant, and also grants this actually fiscal year came in lower than what the original offset was proposed at. So we've taken a measure of reducing the prior year's offsets to bring them more in line with what actuals come in at. So you'll see that plays a huge role in terms of, it actually jumps our estimated FY '18, FY '18 up even higher than what it would have been in FY '17. The 3,000 series is other services, which includes, like I said before, transportation, health, and athletic expenses. It represents a 6.7% increase. Operations includes utilities, buildings, and grounds expenses, represents a 4.3% The 5,000 series includes retirement contributions such as Plymouth County, health insurance, life insurance, and other insurances, represents a 9% increase, and that's based off the, the majority of that is the health insurance calculation that we have for this year. And the 9,000 series, this, I know everyone wants to jump all over special ed and out-of-district placements, but while this looks like a negative slide, there actually is a huge positive to this slide. So if you look, this is specifically just out-of-district tuition. It doesn't include transportation, it's solely just the tuition cost. Adjusted for FY '17, we had a total number of $870,000, which is in the operating budget. However, in FY '17, we also had an offset of $500,000 that's not included in that $870,000 number. That $500,000 offset was approved by school committee. And in reality, while the money was there, our actual money we received this fiscal year for tuition, for circuit breaker reimbursement, was, I think, roughly around $370,000. So to offset what would have been a shortfall last year, we voted to approve the use of reserve money, if you want to call it, or excess funds in that account that actually weren't sustainable. And I'll dive into that a little bit more deeper. But if you look at comparison
The only piece I want to add on to that is, the $500,000 use of circuit breaker was originally approved last year. In our second approval, we've used more circuit breaker funds. So we've really depleted that reserve. So at the end of the year, we're projecting that our circuit breaker account for this year FY '17 will be
$75,000.
About $75,000. So that is not a good place for us to be in, in terms of our circuit breaker reserve. So we need to build that fund back. So right now, early on, we're projecting that, we would, and Brad's going to touch on this, we'd only use $250,000 worth of circuit breaker next year, with an estimation that we're going to bring in around
I think it's like 330, 340.
So we're projecting that we'll bring in 340, but only use 250 to try to build back some of that reserve, because the reserve's in a bad, bad, bad position.
The goal with circuit breakers, you always have, want to have one year at hand, so when you budget a number, it's actually the hard number that you took in from the previous year. That's what a lot of districts do, and it works out well for them. That way, you're not throwing a dart at the board, guessing what number you'll actually get back. It's actually a hard number that you know will be able to budget. So in, in reality, the actual numbers, if you include the regular budget amount plus circuit breaker offset, we actually have an 8.3% decrease in tuitions this year. One other item I want to add on
Projected for next year.
Yeah, for next year, excuse me. I'm already a year ahead of myself here. One thing I want to add on to this though, and this is key to our whole shortfall amount that you'll see in a second, is right now budgeted, I have $185,000 for tuitions that are, if we close our books today and we start a new fiscal year tomorrow, that is where the student's placement is. We have three kids that we've identified that are looking to possibly change from residential program to a day program. And also, there's one DCF case that we have back and forth on that we have budgeted just for worst-case scenario. So while this number represents all that included, that may be another $185,000 that we can take off that account and shift to our other line items in the budget. So that's just one thing I wanted to mention. I know special ed always gets the, it's a hole in your, in your wallet, but this, I can't tell you how great this is to see coming in here as a new business manager, to see that you guys are actually decreasing in special ed. Usually, every district that you see is increasing, and usually, it's a sizable amount. So that's a great job by our special ed department, bringing programs to help offset out-of-district tuitions. So here you go, is your overall FY '18 budget, when you add up everything by the function code. The FY '18 proposal, right now, if we close our books today, would be $23,885,081. And this gives you the shortfall amount. So if you looked, and our level service would be the 23, 885 I just mentioned. The FY '18 town budget that was approved, I think, a rough estimate by the Board of Selectmen, or, Michael, I feel free to add on to that, is that the hard number that was actually approved? Is $22,769,286, and that leaves us a shortfall of next fiscal year of just over $1.1 million. Here's some quick notes. As I mentioned before, especially in circuit breaker, FY '17 offset amounts were not sustainable. Overall, based on contractual obligations, there's a 2% base increase for all employees. And then for, specifically for the teachers and anyone that's on a step scale, there's step and longevity increases. Here's the one highlight that we want to make note of, and this isn't to say that every teacher is getting a 7% increase, because like I mentioned before, there was a lot of adjustments made to the budget where offsets did not come in at the levels that we expected them to. So if you look at our actual budget, it would show a 7% increase is the average for a teacher's salary. In reality, that's not the case. It's probably 6, 6.5, based on the fact that that's the offsets, but that's where a lot of the, a lot of the money shifts to. And also, a key here too, and I just want to highlight this as a FY '17 original, is the active employee health insurance amount. If you look, if you were to dig back through our final FY '16 amount, it actually was over, it was just over $2.5 million. So the amount that was approved for FY '17 was lower than the actual closeout FY '16 budget amount. I'm not sure, I've tried to trace where that number came from, and I could not find any documentation on where the 2.4 originally came from, but that's here, it's gone, we're over that now. The adjusted amount is the 2.774 for health insurance for this fiscal year, and then 9% gives you your projected FY '18, and that is based on actuals as of October 1st for enrollments we had in health insurance. I can say, this doesn't include any additions, and we've also, I've had three people email me about aging off their parents' health insurance, and they're not even included in that number. So that number's not hard, that's our ongoing rolling number. And generally, on most years, you would want to budget for a few family plans, just in case someone switched from a single to a family, or life situations always change on a daily basis. But if I did that this year, that would just drive our shortfall even up even higher. So for right now, budgeting purposes, I took what the actual was for October 1st, and that's what I used for a 9% adjustment. And that is our FY '18.
So my, the things I'd like to add on to that is, so thank you, Brad.
Yep.
Is, you know, our intention this evening is not to offer solutions, but to make everyone aware of the issues that we're facing. We need to discuss that all options are on the table in terms of addressing this issue. And it, it's a moving target a little bit. You know, so things, things are going to change, things are going to adjust. You know, as Brad mentioned, right now, we have $185,000 in special ed costs that in February, we might have a better sense on whether those costs are going to be real. You know, so, because we have some sense, there's going to be some movement based on what's happening with some students. The bottom line is, as of today, that movement hasn't occurred, but by February, that movement may occur. So there, there's going to be, there's going to be movement within this, but we wanted to give a sense of where we are as, as of right now. The other thing is that, that's what I'd at least say, that if, if we were going to address the $1.1 million shortfall slowly, solely through layoffs and reductions of staff, we'd probably be, an estimate would be, you know, 22 to 25 positions if we had to cover the unemployment for those positions. The town, there's already, we've been in some discussions with the town about the town covering any unemployment costs that will come along. So if the town was willing to cover unemployment costs, still, we'd be looking at, you know, probably 15 to 18 positions to cover the $1.1 million shortfall done solely through staff reductions. Not saying that's the only way we're going to do it. So we're going to have to come up with other options and look, and really, our goal today is really say, all options have to be on the table, and what we're going to be doing over the next couple of months is evaluating those options and seeing what we can do to meet the shortfall.
I think that the, the projections that you made, I appreciate the proactive approach on that, and trying to look at it long-term and how we don't get in deeper than we are. But I think that when we look at, at fixing the wound that we have right now, that's going to take some serious conversation and cooperation, I think, to try and make that happen, leading to some of the concerns, Michael, that I, that I had addressed earlier. And I think, Andrew, this kind of supports in a way, or Andy, I'm sorry, in your, your reserve account there that we had spoken about at the last joint committee meeting, with those health insurance costs.
Oh, those are special ed costs. We have talked about, town has talked about establishing a circuit breaker account at the town level, we'll call it a town-level circuit breaker
Yeah, that's
Raise for special ed costs, where we could look at seeing, you know, we'd have to, you know, we haven't actually come up with when the date would be, what would establish what the real number is. I'm assuming when the school committee passed the budget. So when the school committee passed the budget, we'd say, we have, you know, X number of students at out-of-district placements at X cost or Y cost. And then if we, if our enrollment went over that, if we had 20 students out of district at a number, and then we had by next year, by December, because of move-ins or different things that happened, we had 23 students at out-of-district placements, and those out-of-district places cost $100,000 more, that we could access that circuit breaker reserve account. And the town has talked about doing that. That, I mean, that could be a way of helping us in terms of making some decisions of how we're going to build up our own circuit breaker reserve account, because as I said, part of our projections right now have us using less money in circuit breaker than we intend on bringing in next year, or we're, or we're expected to bring in, based on feeling like that account needs to be built up a little bit, because it's, it's at a level that it shouldn't be currently to meet this year's budget. So that is something that could definitely as well happen through the town.
So, and I don't want to contradict what you put out there, because this is not a session to offer solutions. We're not looking for a way to try and solve this right now. But there, there can be some intimidating facts that are put out there right now, so, you know, any, any comments or questions from the committee at all?
I just think the biggest thing becomes, we need to be open to everything. Even if we shoot it down, but we have to look at it. We have to look at every option we possibly can, be as transparent as possible, and show that, you know, we're willing to do everything it takes, and at least look at everything. And I think this group will. So over the next few months, that'll be the number one thing, I think, we'll do as a group, and, and really see where we're at. I think the, the number right now looks imposing, but we look at it, where we're going to be at after a while, you know? But let's fight to get there as a group. I think we can really do a good job to do that. So that, that's, right now, tonight, I think it just means we're going to move forward as a group and, and do what we can do to get that number at a more manageable level.
I had a question. Brad, on the health insurance, are you looking at about $500,000 of the shortfall being just health insurance?
No, so
The gap?
No. So if you look, the 500,000, let me open up my slides again. The 500,000, I believe, would represent the original amount that was approved
Right.
For July 1st of this fiscal year. It would be a $500,000 swing, but reality is, you guys made the motion or an adjustment to move that amount to cover this fiscal year's actual amount. So it's really, I think, just over $300,000.
And the rest is, what's the, what would the breakdown be on the rest of the shortfall? Would it be the lack of grants from the state? How much would it be in contractual salaries? Do you have a breakdown on those?
Yeah, if you look in the actual, in the actual shares, there's a couple of spreadsheets for you guys. They break it down by line item.
There's that, you're actually fine with a spreadsheet that breaks the entire budget down by line item.
Mm-hmm.
For each line account.
All right, well
And we were, you know, our intention tonight was not to go through that line by line, but that is, that information's there.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
I think the, I think the concept, Andy, is to let everybody just be aware of sort of what we're looking at and what we're facing right now, because as Andrew said, it, it's going to be important that we put everything on the table that we can. Because if, if, you know, this is not something that anybody's, my concern right now is that we've been through a situation similar to this, and numbers were presented to people that sort of put a little fear out, and, and we lost some great employees who, who left to move on to something else because of that. And I, I really want to try and, I, I can't say that, as we said, we're not here for a solution, but we are, as you said, Andrew, going to put everything we can towards trying to find the best possible solution and keeping as much staff as we possibly can to make everything be as, as even as it can be. I, I think there's some good ideas that are out there, and I think it's already proved to be working towards that right direction, but, you know, this is, this is a pretty daunting task ahead to try and compensate for that amount, but surely not impossible.
Well, I think, working with the town now, as we come in, come together in cooperation with the town, and our department, and to try to work together as a team to make, to go forward and make everything, all of our budgets, all of our contracts, everything, all of our final numbers monetarily sustainable, so we don't have to lay people off. I think that's the goal going, going forward, obviously. I mean, I hate seeing even the prospect of letting anybody go, you know, but
Well, and I think, Andy, that I made a note that, you know, I, I appreciate the way that they're presenting the forecasting with, with the, with the circuit breaker and, and making sure and, and making sure that we're not keeping ourselves in this position that we're in. But I think right now, we re, we really need to focus on how we fix the wound that we have, and how we get through what we've got. Because I think we're in long-term, looking in the right direction, looking in the right way, and moving in a progressive direction, but we've got to get past where we're at right now to, to make that more viable. And I, I think really, I, I would hope that the staff and the, the people that work in this town know that this will be our priority to address this, in the most creative possible way that we can. And I, and I appreciate Scott and Brad, all the creative thinking and the cooperation with Mike and the town, to put that cooperative thinking into how we are going to resolve this, and I think that's got to continue, as you said. And, and we've got to make sure that, you know, this is a focus that, this isn't just a fix, we're going to have to do year after year after year. We've, we've got a fix right now, but we're also looking forward as we make our projections and make our estimations of where we're going to go in a, in a realistic way that will hopefully balance it a little more clearly, and a little more, as you said, sustainably. Paul, anything?
No.
No?
I think we'll have a lot of discussions about this.
I, I think we should, Andy, I think this should definitely be something that we really put our time and effort into, helping Scott and anybody else who needs that to get where we need to be.
I agree.
Scott, anything else?
Nope, so there's no action required on this, this was informational, to put the information out to people, and as I said, we'll be working towards coming up with a plan on how we're going to meet the current projected budget shortfall in upcoming meetings. So moving on to our next.
Our next.
So our, our next topic is, it is related, so we said we weren't proposing solutions, saying this may not be a solution, we will, at least an avenue we want to pursue, is I want the committee to consider a request to have myself send a letter to the president of the APC, to see if they would consider reopening negotiations. The goal of that letter would be to see if they're willing to negotiate some adjustments to help meet the current projected shortfalls. So I wanted to get the committee's opinion on whether you would direct me to send such a letter and invitation to the APC, and be involved in that, those negotiations.
Should we make the motion before we move it on, or? So I'd accept the motion?
No.
I move that the Carver School Committee asked the EAPC to consider opening the Unit A contract for the purpose of negotiating over adjustments to salaries and other provisions, with the goal of reducing the budget shortfall anticipated for the two thousand, for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year.
Second. Second by Andrew, or Andy, excuse me. So, comments, questions?
Well, I think this just speaks to what we said earlier, we're trying to get creative, right? This is many, you know, exhaust all options, and, and that's what this is, you know? This is, this is the first option we thought of, we brought it up tonight, there's going to be many more, but this is the first one.
And, you know, the other thing I would caution the committee in terms of discussion is obviously, this is just solely in terms of inviting the APCs to enter that, we can't get into any discussion that would be considered in any way, negotiations.
I just want to say, you know, it stinks, the situation is bleak, but I do appreciate everything that you guys have done to get us in a better position, and, you know, we've gone to our teachers before and asked them to come together for us, and I'm hoping that they'll at least be willing to have the conversation with us, as painful as it is.
I'll just echo what we said before, I mean, we talked about all, all options being on the table, this is a letter just inviting them into reopening negotiations, it's an avenue we should look into, so I'm for it.
Okay, I think that's the goal, you know, is a conversation. Conversations can end any way you want them to, but if they don't happen, then we're not going to get anywhere. And I, and I, I think that, as you said, Paula, it can be an uncomfortable feeling, but if we don't put everything on the table, then we're going to miss something. And, and I would hope and appreciate if the EAPC is willing to support that, but as a school committee member, it appears that as a committee, we're pretty unified in hoping that that is a, some way to move forward. So with that, anything else? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed?
I'm sorry, I jumped in early, sorry.
That's all right, unanimous?
So I will, I will draft a letter to Tom Pinto, the EAPC president, asking them to consider opening negotiations over adjustments to salaries and other provisions. So I will, and then, well, when we get a response, hopefully we'll have a response by our December meeting, and then we'll go forward from there in terms of our next steps in the process.
Excellent. So, building committee, updates?
Just thought I'd give some updates in terms of what's happened. Work has begun in earnest at the elementary school, they've set up erosion controls, put up a construction fence and temporary fence, where they're going to be working on the water lines, cleared the site, delivered construction trailers, and have begun work on connecting the current wells to the old buildings. Because if we remember, it's part of the DEP process, we are actually, they've requested or required that we tie the current buildings into the new wells. So that's the first step that has to happen, so that, that process is underway. The short, the short-term goal is to have the new wells connected to the current buildings by the Friday after Thanksgiving, and right now, we're moving towards putting foundations in in December, and we'll, and I'll just say, you know, once, once work began, it's, it's moved quickly and, and has been going well.
There's a lot of rubbernecking on fifty-eight on front of the school these days. It's exciting, though, and I, I think as, as per schedule, the town and our project managers have kept everything on task, and it's going just as we all hoped it would go so far, so let's hope we stay within that trend and keep things the way they're going, and get where they need to be before any winter, if any winter.
So, we are just, we are meeting on a weekly basis with PMA and CTA and HMFH. That meeting includes myself, Mike Malonowski, Rui Maestis, Dave Seidenthal, Bill Harriman, and De, and John Delapiscoli. It's a group we've brought together to try to help oversee the project, so we have a weekly meeting with the construction team. And starting next month, PMA, our project managers, will actually be putting out a monthly report. I've invited them to the December School Committee to share the first monthly report and kind of go over it with the committee, and I thought it'd be an opportunity for them to do that with the public. You know, obviously, that would make sense to happen at the building committee as well, but I thought it'd be good for the school committee to see that. So Chad Criddon from PMA, I believe, is going to come and make a presentation in December. They'll, they'll show the first monthly report, which will actually be a combined, it's going to be October and November, just because we started a little later. There wasn't much to the October report yet, but the October, so the first will actually be a combined October, November. And that report is actually going to be available, obviously, monthly, but it'll be posted on the school website, the town website, be available to the public, so it's an opportunity for the public to see the information that'll be going out to them on a monthly basis in terms of what's happening with the project. So Chad will hopefully be here Friday, December meeting.
Scott, wasn't there, wasn't there talk of, of putting a, kind of a webcam thing, like the fire pot?
There is, so we are, there is, we are in the discussions of putting in a camera system, and I, I don't think we've actually come to a final decision on which camera we're going to put in, whether it's just a camera that's going to watch the construction build, there's some op, do we have some choices there? It's going to come back to the building committee, I believe, in terms of whether it's just a, a spy cam that shows the building coming up from the ground up, or there's actually some camera, cameras that will do some internal work. Well, do some internal work to actually show the interiors of the building, so you'll actually know what's behind walls, so you'll actually have, and I think that kind of makes sense to do that, as you go forward, but I don't, I don't think we've come to a final decision on that yet. I'm looking at Michael's hand, I don't think we've.
Hopefully, we'll have it on the right of December.
Yeah, so, so yeah, that is going to, that's going to be in place.
And the date of the next building committee meeting?
It's December sometime.
The thirteenth?
December thir, Tuesday, December thirteenth, seven o'clock.
Is that the day after, is that the day after our meeting?
It's the day after our meeting, yes.
And which both will be held at Town Hall next month?
Hopefully, yep. Our plan is for a Town Hall for the, on the twelfth.
Any other, any other questions or comments there?
Nope.
So moving on.
So, there's update, Brad? Yep. So for the middle high, MSBA has officially approved the excited repair, as Scott noted before. Gym floor is complete and it's being used, the athletic trainer has been relocated, as we mentioned before as well. The only thing that is being held off right now on the, in the gym is there's two curtains that are going to be put in place, they are not in there yet, but that's coming.
And the wall pads as well?
The wall pads as well, yes, correct. The softball field has new stone dust laid down, the baseball field has been entirely removed, not removed, the infield has been entirely removed, and it's being rebuilt with new material. And also, I know we are in works of adding in additional wells, that'll be, have irrigation dedicated directly to the actual fields themselves. I don't have exact timeline on that project, but I know it's in the works to get done for beginning of next school year, possibly, I believe so.
In the, in the spring, hopefully the wells will go in, and then we'll be able to irrigate in the spring.
All right. And that was it.
Well, if you get to, if you get to vote, you get to see the new floor, and there's, heard quite a bit of compliments on the floor that day. Looks really nice. They did a beautiful job with that.
Oh, so we had, I, I always. I don't know what his place is, I don't know if you know his place of business. But he fo, he focuses on irrigation systems, field development, so he, and then there was also support from Gary Garrington, who's a, a local grower in town who's been very supportive of the project. So those projects have all gone forward because a lot of them through donations from the town and from Makepeace. And the Cala, Cala approved fifty, the Capital, Capital A approved fifty thousand dollars to, out of its reserve fund from this year to put in the wells, for the person putting in the wells. Because ultimately, those fields were destroyed by the summer and the fact that we weren't able to irrigate. We weren't able to irrigate because of, under the DEP consent water, because of the way the irrigation system worked. The EP had told us we were not able to use it until that system was rebuilt, so we're in the process of, we're in the process of having that designed to have that system rebuilt, and so not being able to water all the summer where we didn't get a lot of water really laid havoc to those fields. So with a lot of community support and support of Capital A, we're going to be able to hopefully bring those fields back next spring and into next fall.
So, I appreciate the, the recognition and the, and the reminder that, I guess, it's, I love hearing that all the time, because I, I love hearing more ways how this community helps itself move forward and work together to do that. My only thought would be maybe, and, and I don't know where you would draw the line with this, or how you might deal with that, but is there a, maybe some sort of a, a letter of recognition or thanks that we could send out?
We could certainly invite them to our next school committee meeting. They may, they may respectfully decline, as, as I don't know what's right, there's a letter.
Yeah, I, I think just a letter to acknowledge the, you know, and appreciate their cooperative nature and their, and to thank them for helping us get to where we need to be is.
I will draft, I will draft a letter to both of them, and send that off to them.
Thank you.
And to Makepeace as well.
Constant supporter in Makepeace, yes, thank you. So moving on to a calendar of upcoming events?
You just, you just have a calendar of events for you to take a look at, to see what's coming up in the district in terms of, we're getting to that year of concerts and all kinds of events at the schools, obviously, the committee is invited to all those events, we'd, we'd love to see that. I don't know if there's any, any thoughts on the calendar of events?
My son is starting moose running through my house. But that's all right, it's fun to hear.
I'll hit some of the concerts, I, in, in my own drive folder, I've lost the agenda, so I have to pull the agenda up for a second here. And we'll get to.
We're on recommendations.
Nah, I'm, I'm almost there. Not even sure how I dropped out of it, but. All right, so just to highlight upcoming events, we have the high school concert on December thirteenth at seven o'clock, we have the elementary winter concert on the fourteenth at six thirty, we have the middle high school concert on the twentieth at seven o'clock, we have the grade one and two song fest on the twenty-second, so those are kind of our, and then the Winter Wonderland PTO event on December tenth at the elementary school. Those are kind of traditional yearly key events that happen at both buildings, and so I just wanted to highlight those for the community, and now I see that Meredith got it up on the screen faster than I was able to get it up on my device, so. That's all, that's all I have in terms of calendar events.
So moving on to recommendations from the superintendent.
So as part of the new elementary school process, we've agreed to go for what's called the Collaborative for High Performing Schools Certification, or CHIP certification. I'm going to read a statement from their website, because I think it's the best definition of what they are. The Collaborative for High Performance Schools believes kids learn better in schools with good lighting, clean air, and comfortable classrooms. That's why CPHS works with schools and experts to make changes to ensure that every child has the best possible learning environment with the smallest impacts on the planet. By going for CHIP certification, we've earned additional reimbursement points for the project through MSBA. The certification process requires that the school make some agreements, pass some resolutions, and adopt some policies that support green initiatives. In future meetings, we'll be looking at policies that need to be adopted as part of this process. This evening, I have one recommendation for you, one resolution, that is part of the CHIP certification process. Basically, the resolution states the district will only buy equipment and appliances that are compliant with the specifications supplied through the Energy Star program. So you have a copy of the resolution in your documents, I'd ask you to, and I'd entertain a motion to adopt said resolution, because that will help us earn our certification, which is actually a requirement under our agreement with MSBA in terms of reimbursement points.
I take a motion on that?
I'll make a motion. I move to require that all new purchase of equipment and appliances for all the Carver Public Schools are compliant with the, with the specifications provided through the Energy Star program, and to prohibit the purchase of, oh, excuse me, to prohibit the purchase or low-efficiency, I always write the first name, of low-efficiency products, including halogen torches and portable electric-resistant heaters.
And that, that's specific right from the resolution, that word, that language.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is made and seconded, any questions, comments?
I mean, the way you stated it at the end there, Scott, these are all, this is factored in, MSBA, this is credits that we need to do this to obtain all the, the allocated credits that we can receive.
We've already approved it.
Yeah, it was a decision made by the building committee, so as the building committee went through the process, they were given the option of whether we wanted to go for CHIP certification. That did not come directly back to the school committee, but the building committee did approve going for, for the CHIP certification. I mean, and most of the things that they're looking for here are pretty straightforward, and this is really just saying that we're going to look at buying any Energy Star rated appliances, which I think the district does anyhow, so I think it's something that we're already compliant in, this isn't a huge change, this is just actually having a document as a resolution versus myself as a superintendent saying, yes, we do that. And so then, as part of the certification process, I actually have to draft a letter to them saying that the resolution has been approved by the school committee.
I, we, we recently got a new washer, and on the new washer, it says to only use high-efficiency detergent in it, and that's when I actually started looking, and when you go to the store, almost everything in the store has that little HE, high-efficiency detergent on it now. Almost everything they're selling is, is Energy Star efficient, because there's not a market for anything that's really not. So I, initially, I was a little reluctant with the language, but the more I kind of delved into it and thought about it, pretty much everything out there that's available fits into that category, that's going to be viable anyway, so, yeah.
And currently, it's what we're really doing, so it's just codifying what we do, and making it official and putting it in writing, similar to, you know, one of the policies that the policy subcommittee is going to look at coming up in the next coming up in the next couple of days is, it's something we've talked about before, is an idling policy saying that buses get idled in front of the school. We've actually talked about that. And that, if you go in front of the elementary school, there's a sign that says, "No idling." It's something that we already do, but the school committee doesn't actually have a specific no-idling policy. As part of the CHIP Certification process, it is a requirement that we have a no-idling policy if we're gonna go for that CHIP Certification. So I'd say, coming up in the next couple of meetings, there's gonna be some, this issue's gonna come back a couple of times in terms of some things the committee has to do. But I'm gonna make sure that we try to take it through the proper steps, and so we're gonna have the policy subcommittee meet to look at those policies and decide if they wanna move them forward to the committee, and we'll follow that process.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous? Reports from the school committee? Gentlemen?
Report, I'll go with, first off, to everyone, I wanna wish you guys a happy Thanksgiving. You know, everybody on the committee and on the panel here, happy Thanksgiving. You know, I think, you know, we're getting through the fall, getting, moving ourselves into the winter. I think Mike Schultz did a great job, you know, really getting us ready at high school level. I got to see it, I know Mike Santos got to see it. And I'm really interested to see how the winter and the spring go. I haven't been able to come down as much as I would like to, to see you, so hopefully I'll get down there more often. But I know my son is extremely excited, comes home every day, and he's excited about the next day, which is exactly what I want as a parent, so. And I know that you're a large part in making that happen, so thank you. But for me, just have a very nice holiday, and I look forward to seeing everybody in December.
I don't have, I don't have much. Again, I'll echo Andrew's words, have a great Thanksgiving, everybody. I'm sure everybody's glad the election is over. It was, it was an adventure, but it brought a lot of good debate, I thought. But also, I thought, we can talk about this as well, so that at some point, maybe have a new, renewed importance on looking at civics back in our society, you know? And there's a lot of confusion out there right now, but that's another whole conversation. The other thing is, I wish Carver's football team well on Thanksgiving Day. I'm gonna try and be there to watch the game, I think we're hosting this year.
Yes, we are, Home Against the Bull, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, okay, that's what I wasn't sure of. So I wish them all the luck in the world, and everybody have a great holiday. Thank you.
I got nothing. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
I'd like to actually give a belated happy Veterans' Day for all those that chose to serve, since we tended to miss that holiday, and also look forward to a great Thanksgiving with your families. And one last note to add on where we started, I would like to thank Mr. Schultz and Ms. Bowie, Ms. Rush, and all of those who put a lot of effort in to make sure we got through this transition the best way we could. And hopefully, we can keep looking forward in that progressive way as a town and get to where we need to be to make everybody happy. So, thank you.